We do need to announce that we have an executive session at 6:30 to discuss personnel and legal issues, and I'm filling in for Eric tonight. Whoever please stand for the question.
My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, our history, our public confidence, the way of the day of one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Howther.
Yes, he is.
Here.
Dr. Lawton?
Here.
Mrs. Maynes?
Here.
Mr. McCollum?
Here.
And Dr. Bigger?
Here.
Yes, welcome everybody this evening. I'm excited to say that we do have several of our new teachers who will be approved this evening to join Greater Littrove School District's team, and we're looking forward to that. This Thursday will be the first day of our new teacher induction, and Friday will be the second day of our teacher induction. Next Monday, all of our teachers will be returning for opening and service day, and throughout the week through Thursday, we will be having professional development through the entire week. We continue to monitor COVID data, and hold discussions on our current health and safety plan. I can note that our Health and Safety Committee comprised of four of our board members will be meeting this Friday to further discuss our health and safety plan.
Other than that, that's where it's over here. Thank you, Dr. Pepper. It's time for hearing of visitors, part one, and this is an opportunity for anyone to discuss anything on tonight's agenda. There is a five-minute time limit, and anybody who wishes to address their concerns, go to the podium and say your name and your address. But it will be a time later to discuss any concerns that are on your agenda. So let's move to the floor, Mr. Maynes.
No report.
All right. I'm going to be adopted, so I will just come here. I'm going to be adopted and resolution number three, approval of last month's minutes.
Excellent.
The booth in second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And then it's our official desk report. Education and planning, Mrs. Maynes?
Thank you. Enrollment report, Mr. Franka?
Well, there technically is no enrollment report because we haven't started, but I will tell you that if you haven't enrolled your child in kindergarten, please do so. But we are watching kindergarten numbers, obviously. We do have some last minute registrations, but if you have been reached by our office, the child counting office, and you still have documentation to provide to us, please do so immediately so that we can make sure our kindergarten numbers are scored. That's all, Mrs. Maynes.
Thank you, Mr. Franka. At this time of the year, we do a lot of approving agreements, and the next eight things listed on my, under my education and planning are agreements with various places, and there are attachments there for you to read about them. So if you would, the next eight, go down to approve AIU services agreement, please look at those and be ready to vote on those next week. The next two are memorandum of understandings between the school district and the, let me read them. We're going to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Greater Littrove School District and the Private Industry Council of Westmoreland Fayette Incorporated, operating the pre-K county program at Littrove Elementary School. That will be on your agenda, and again, there is something here to read for that. We're also going to approve a memorandum of understanding between Greater Littrove School District and the Greater Littrove Education Association for the 21-22 school year. Those will all be agenda items. The next item is to approve an tuition student from very area of school district as listed. The next one is to approve a youth survey, and we've done this in the past, PAYS, distribution for the 21-22 school year that must be approved by the board in order to do that. So that will be on your agenda for approval. The next one is to approve an elementary instruction time template for the 21-22 school year, and there is an attachment there. Would anyone like to speak about that?
I could speak about that. We are required to have an emergency instructional time template if for some reason we would need to go virtual with the pandemic, or if we would have to modify schedules, and that had been submitted and it needs to be board approved.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, we will be approving an inner-site professional therapy services agreement for the 21-22 school year, and again, there is an informational item there for you to read. Unless anyone has questions, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. or Mrs. President. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the resolution. I'm so sorry. We will, I vote, I ask you to adopt resolution number zero four to approve the AFAS intracultural programs, international youth exchange organization, and foreign exchange for 21-22, and we will be having a foreign exchange event from Italy. So vote on that resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's good move, the second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And then most last.
And the next curriculum committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, September the 21st, 2021, at 5:30 p.m. here in the CSC. And thank you.
Thank you. Next is finance. I'll take that. You have just agenda items which you had a chance hopefully to look at the attachments and find out what we do that for bringing tax settlements, treasuries, your court payment bills, taxes, donation, due and budget, and disposal and sale of vehicle. It's wrap costs. I'd like to know if there's no more questions. Yeah, passing on that. And the next finance committee meeting is Tuesdays, September 14th at 5:30 in the high school library. Facilities operations and planning, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very, very excited to attach as they relate to votes for next week. There's attachments that are to be all looked at, and our meeting minutes are attached from June 10th and August 12th and fifth, and that's facility operations and planning committee meeting is Thursdays, September 2nd, 2021, 2:30 after the end of the day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Student activities and recreation?
Thank you. We'll be following on the events in the future, which are good for winter sports equipment, and student activities and recreation for the youth. We'll be doing transportation. There will be the ones in the J D for next week. First one is to approve the 2021-2022 DMJ transportation school bus and van drivers. And the second is to approve the transportation for the 2025-2022. And the last is to approve the transportation contracts for 2021-2022.
And Mr. Music. Meeting relations, Mrs. Rafferty?
Catch, we'll find the minutes from the Littrove GLSD Department of Operations meeting on May the 20th and June 17th. And the next Littrove GLSD Department of Operations mission meeting will be Thursday, August 19th at 4:30. The Littrove meeting is going.
The rest of the meeting is the rest of the meeting.
Does that include your report? Have you pleased my report, Dr. Lawton? Thank you, Mrs. Raff. Westmoreland Intermedia Unit, Mrs. Maynes?
Yes, thank you. There's a summary of the WIU board meeting minutes from July. We did, I'm sorry, I think it's January, we did not make it July. And those are for you to read, and the next WIU committee meeting will be next Tuesday, August 24th, in the public in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. EWC TC Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Cozal?
Thank you, Dr. Lawton. The meeting, the minutes from our past meeting on the 23rd are in your agenda, and our next meeting will be Wednesday, August 25th. Thank you.
Mrs. Cozal, board policy, PSBA is on Mrs. Stratt.
Catch, through your review, you'll find the first reading of the board policy, policy 800, electronic signatures and letters, and A16, these computers and electronic resources are both new policies. I'm sorry, because I just want to tell the names. Otherwise, readings, we'll see. And A161, district social media, and policy 918, all of you. This is the first reading, so you can read that for this, and then we'll have two minutes of this. The next board policy committee meeting is to be determined, and that's it. Thank you, Dr. Lawton.
And Mrs. Raff, technology, Mr. Bond?
Thank you, Dr. Lawton. I hope you're working this evening, however, by Mexico, and this October 9th, 2021, at 4:30 at CSC. Thank you.
Superintendent, Inspector Lewis?
Yes, I'd ask the board to please move on resolution number zero five to approve the resignations as stated. I would like to thank everybody for their service. We have Emily Stevens for other employment, Zachary Sims, other employment, Amanda Pletcher other employment, and we should note that the other employment is to executive teaching position, Lynette Japay, Amanda Henry, Ken Kahlo from COF, weight training, assistant supervisor, personal care assistant, Rita Benson, Casey Simuski, Marilyn Strong, and food service, Lauren Stoffer and Janet Welsh, along with music teacher Michael Manziati for accepting another position with the University of Pittsburgh, and Emily Troppidiano, elementary teacher, for finding a position closer to her home. Again, I thank everybody for their service.
Second.
The booth in second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This resolution passes.
A very exciting, I ask the board to please move on resolution number zero six to approve professional personnel, and I would like to state these individuals, and then after the vote, I would ask if you could please come to the podium and introduce yourselves so our Board of Education can meet everybody. We have Luke Shaper, special education teacher, Zachary Simmons, elementary teacher, Amanda Pletcher, Title I teacher, Joel Trenton, secondary social studies teacher, Kathryn Batovich, secondary social studies teacher, and Natalie Sarvee, elementary teacher.
Second. The booth in second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? This resolution passes.
And congratulations, and if we could just have, just start coming up, Luke, Zach, Amanda, Joel, Kathryn, and Natalie. I believe everybody's ears are blinding out in the audience, but I think I see everybody.
Good evening. I'm Joel Trenton. Hello, how are you? It's nice to see you. I'm happy to be standing up. I want to be real brief, but I want to be sincere, that I want to thank the hiring committee for believing in me. I want to thank the members of the school board for believing in me as well, and having worked in the middle school for the past few months, starting from January up until the end of the school year. I can sincerely say that I love it here, and I can't wait to be a part of moving Greater Littrove further and stronger in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Luke Shaper. I was born and raised in Littrove. I'm super excited to be in this position, so I want to thank you all for that, and yeah, I'm just proud to be here, to give back to the community that made me the man that I am today. So I appreciate it, and I'm ready to get to work. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amanda Pletcher. I'm going to be the community specialist here at Greater Littrove, and just really know about it, so thank you for the opportunity to play, and I look forward to getting this started.
I am Natalie Sarvee. I have my own kindergarten this year, and I'm super excited to be a part of the Greater Littrove School District, so thank you to all of you and everybody that's out there. So thank you.
I'm Zach Sims, fourth grade at Babie this year, as a GLSD alumni, and Babie alumni, I'm super grateful for this opportunity, and I look forward to meeting you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathryn Batovich. Thank you all for this opportunity to be here. I grew up a military child, moving all over the country, and I just spent the last four years just across the street at St. Vincent, and I'm so thankful for this opportunity that I can finally stay in one place and settle down and call this place home.
And you all, we are very excited to work with all of you, and we will see you on Thursday at 8:00 a.m. Correct me, Mr. Franka?
We'll see you at 5:20.
Okay. At the ECSC at Littrove Elementary School. Congratulations again. I now ask the board to please move on resolution number zero seven to approve support personnel, classified appointments. We have Ashley Pilott as secretary, which is retroactive to June 15th, Leanne Gesto secretary, Brett Valerini classroom assistant, Emily Daly classroom assistant, Marissa Brown classroom assistant, Carrie Shafron, food service truck driver, Nadine, Yoka Pennett, part-time food service employee, and Mallory Palanca, part-time food service employee, along with Casey Simuski, substitute personal care assistant.
The booth in second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This resolution passes.
Thank you. I'd like to please ask the board to please move on resolution number zero eight to approve support personnel, classified appointments, and personal care assistants as listed.
The booth in second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This resolution passes.
I'd ask the board to please move on resolution zero nine to approve professional personnel, substitute teachers as listed on the four pages.
The booth in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This resolution passes.
I'd ask the board to please move on resolution zero nine to approve professional personnel, substitute teachers as listed on the four pages.
The booth in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This resolution passes.
I'd ask the board to please move on resolution number ten, which is granting of tenure to the following individual teachers, Courtney Haas, Maria Emanuel, McCombe, Rookie Brink, Melissa Vincent, and Kathryn Richards.
The booth in second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This resolution passes.
Okay, prior to, I missed something here, we will have ratification of the SEIU agreement next week for local 32BJ, local union 32BJ. That has been added to the agenda, and it will be, there will be a resolution to approve that next week. Thank you very much for pointing that out to me. I'd ask the board to please move on resolution number eleven to approve support personnel appointments, supplement the positions and salaries for those positions for the 2021-22 school year.
The booth in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This resolution passes.
I'd ask the board to please move on resolution number twelve to approve school police for the 2021-22 school year, Robert Brackney, Christine Feok, Jeff Lewis, Michael McElfresh, Sandy Soliday, Scott Soliday, Thomas Malone, and John Zalich.
The booth in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This resolution passes.
I'd ask the board to please move on resolution number twelve to approve school police for the 2021-22 school year, Robert Brackney, Christine Feok, Jeff Lewis, Michael McElfresh, Sandy Soliday, Scott Soliday, Thomas Malone, and John Zalich.
The booth in second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? This resolution passes. So you shoot thirty?
Okay, prior to, I missed something here, we will have ratification of the SEIU agreement next week for local 32BJ, local union 32BJ. That has been added to the agenda, and it will be, there will be a resolution to approve that next week. Thank you very much for pointing that out to me. I'd ask the board to please move on resolution number eleven to approve support personnel appointments, supplement the positions and salaries for those positions for the 2021-22 school year.
The booth in second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? This resolution passes.
I'd ask the board to please move on resolution number twelve to approve school police for the 2021-22 school year, Robert Brackney, Christine Feok, Jeff Lewis, Michael McElfresh, Sandy Soliday, Scott Soliday, Thomas Malone, and John Zalich.
The booth in second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? This resolution passes.
I'd ask the board to please move on resolution number thirteen to approve professional substitute rate for our day-to-day substitute teachers, $110 per day, and $120 for a position of 20 consecutive days in the same position, as well as for our COVID subs.
The booth in second.
Have a question.
Yes.
How did you last year with subs?
Last year was a different year in the sense that we had COVID subs from the beginning of the year. Five dedicated each billing every day, which was something that we've not had in the past. I don't know that I could give you a good answer. We always seem, we always seem to not have enough, but we always seem to just have enough.
I think it was definitely, it was definitely a blessing to have the additional COVID subs due to quarantines and things such as that, and with online instruction. I don't know if any of the building principals want to give any feedback for that that are out there. As Mr. Franka said, there are times where, you know, we fall short, there are times that we pull from building. If there's an extra sub at one building, we ask them to come to another building. We do that at the junior, senior, and high a good bit. But is there any comment? I see Mr. Krevak, I saw Mrs. Maynes.
Having the COVID subs at the high school definitely was a tremendous benefit for us to help us get through this school year. For the most part, we were pretty well covered with those COVID subs. There were days like Dr. Cover said, that we did fall short, but for the most part, we were covered.
Was there ever a reason because of salary or pay, or was it just because we don't have enough subs?
Just because we don't have subs shortages, yes. I do that, and I'm assuming it's a sub shortage, and that sub shortage isn't because of the shortage. I couldn't answer that.
How do you compare the other school districts to my family?
I think Dan, can, can Mr. Watson, we just asked why you raised?
So we raised it from $90 and $100 after 30 days to a flat rate to $120. We did that largely because the surrounding districts that we compete for subs with were experiencing similar shortages in their substitute teachers, and were increasing their rates of pay as well. Some of those schools that aren't necessarily directly surrounding us, but maybe a little bit further away, 20 to 40 minutes, 40, 50 minutes, I should say, have already gotten up to the $110 per day, so we're sort of trying to catch up with them.
So we're kind of in the same ballpark?
Yes, yes, yeah, we're trying to stay consistent with like those things, and those schools that we're competing with.
How many subs have you had in the last term?
I'm sorry, we've been discussing this in committee for a while, and we do need to be there.
I'm sorry. How many emergency certifications do you give out of your?
Well, that's, I.
I'm going to ballpark it at, I can give you the exact number, but I'm going to ballpark it at.
I'd say fifteen.
Yeah, yeah.
For different reasons, a bachelor's science degree, if an individual has a bachelor's science degree, they can become an emergency certified sub, and we do have an emergency certified substitute teacher this year for a single science position because we were able to.
How do we have using emergency certification?
A lot, almost all the time, and everybody else.
A lot, and you know, it's actually, it's interesting, I feel like over the last five years, we have more and more people who do not have education degrees coming to us to be emergency certified, to be substitute.
Not really turn that.
They're fine, we meet with them, answer any questions they might have, you know, we're careful to interview them and see what their background is, but for the most part, they're not doing it for money, they're doing it because they have legitimate interests, they have time, and they want to be involved in our schools.
Basically, what I'm talking about, that they were doing because they wanted to.
Right.
Well, we'll get.
Raising the rate is going to hurt them, that's for sure.
We will get you that exact number, I will make a note of it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions?
All right.
Is that approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to make a motion for actual second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? This resolution passes.
And as I stated earlier in my opening remarks, our teacher in service begins next Monday, August 23rd, and school begins for students in grades K through six, Monday, the 30th, and grade seven and nine, if, excuse me, August 30th, 2021, grades kindergarten through six, seven, and nine, and August 31st, all grades except kindergarten. Kindergarten does not begin until September 1st. Just to note, the seventh grade students do attend, and those individual students who are web leaders in eighth grade attend on August 30th, and that is the same for ninth grade students attend on August 30th, and web leaders from grades 10 through 12 attend on the 30th as well. Our back-to-school nights are listed as August 25th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for grades 135, and August 26th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for 2, 4, and 6 grades. Kindergarten meet and greet, August 24th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and that is by appointment with the student's kindergarten teacher. Our junior and senior high school open, a house school per September 8th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., and next Tuesday, we will have our regular board meeting at 7:30 p.m., and followed in September by our community hall meeting on the 14th, and our regular board meeting on the 21st.
Hearing of visitors, part two. This is where anyone in the audience can come forward with any concerns. Again, please state your name and address, and if you step to the podium, then there's a five-minute timeout. See you tomorrow. I'm going to be adopted and resolution, oh, sorry.
All right, slow to get up. John Farmer, seven, hi, here's Circle in Greensboro. I just wanted to, I know Dr. Pepper, you said at the opening that the Health and Safety Committee was going to be meeting again this Friday. Can we imply then, or refer from that, that there might be another vote on that plan at the board meeting next week?
There possibly could be another vote if the, if the plan changes, and if there is, and if the plan changes, it would be posted on our district website with our agenda Monday afternoon, bar two.
Thank you. And then, you know, I was here at the last meeting, if you know, I just want to reiterate that, you know, my opinion is irrelevant, actually, it's positions I think that matter. I really implore you to reconsider the mask guidance, especially for elementary school children that don't have a choice to be vaccinated, as well as the cafeteria plan. I truly believe that the kids are being put at risk because adults are safe. The American Society of Pediatrics has been cleared, CDC has been cleared, the Department of Education has been cleared, the Department of Health and Safety at Pennsylvania has been cleared, UMC has made a recommendation. I think overwhelmingly, the experts are telling us what to do, and I really hope that that's taken the heart of the question, so that's just a comment. The question I have, though, is the, you mentioned there's a committee, does that committee have pediatricians or physicians on it?
The committee that I'm talking about that will be meeting, Dr. George is the chair of that committee, but it is comprised of board members. However, I can assure you, personally myself, I've already reached out to physicians that were on our Health and Safety Committee last year through this time, so, but this will be the board committee, Health and Safety Committee on Monday. However, I can assure you, personally myself, I've already reached out to physicians that were on our Health and Safety Committee last year through this time. So, but this will be the Board Committee, Health and Safety Committee on Friday. But we do have input from other physicians as well, and pediatricians.
Can you summarize their feedback as best?
At this point in time, they are recommending face coverings for students kindergarten through 12.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Alejandra Castillo. I'm a community health deputy, and also I am in 258, my very own patrol. I was part of the great patrol school this year, but sadly, because of COVID, I changed my children, and I hope to come back. But I hope to see those guidelines in place that I, as a community health deputy, go feel safe to come back with my children. So I just would like to talk about what I received from the Department of Health. Just the last three days, there's a total of 5,951 new cases, and 1,115 patients hospitalized, 301 patients in intensive care. Cases are racing, the Delta variant is here, and in many other countries abroad, it's even challenging the possibility to enter to the country. For example, here, we have about, in August, between August 14th and Monday, August 16th, there was 5,951 additional positive COVID cases and individuals hospitalized, and I won't go with too many details. I would be happy to give this information, if I have an email, I haven't found an email, to a person that I can talk to and give this information. It just is a general information that is sent to the board. So if I could have an email, I would extremely appreciate that. About 53% of the population is vaccinated. We still have 47% of the population that needs to be vaccinated. At least we appreciate as a community health deputy, working with the neighborhood resilience project and when I was born, being part of the collaborative vaccine, the community vaccine collaborative that we missed those vaccinations, so we have a safe county and safe state also. I have some information that I would very happy to share with you. We provide, because of the speakers for law, we provide talks, we provide training to the staff, to the administrative people, to the students. We can do things very fun for the children also. I would extremely appreciate that you opened the door for us. We are a group of people, research from the University of Pittsburgh. We have grants, and we offer this free course for everybody that opens the door for us. We have a immunologist, sorry, my English is not my first language, a pediatrician. We have a team of scientists, it's been a little bit tricky to work with you, so we can decrease the amount of cases that are positive cases, people hospitalized and people that have died. So it's just a matter of, I can pass this around to all of us.
We will-
And also, as a community, I would extremely also appreciate that we can bring mobile units for vaccination. We really want to work with you, but we need that you open the door to us also.
I would like to give that information to your board secretary, and she'll make sure all is dispersed on the board members.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Ditch, and we actually just moved into this district, and we're really excited about it. And I would like to say that I have four children, kindergarten, fourth grade, I'm sorry, fifth grade, third grade, and sixth grade. And one of their biggest questions was to me this year was, Mom, are they gonna mandate masks? And that's why I'm here tonight, because I told them that Greater Little Town School District stood up for parents' rights for their children, and that they were not going to mandate them. And I want to applaud you guys and encourage you to stay strong on what you guys have already decided on, because there is an army of parents that back you on that. I understand other people might have other opinions on that. However, I would like to tell you about my sixth grade child, who is very sensory, what's the word I'm looking for? I had to pull him out of the school district last year and put him in PA cyber, which, I'm sorry to use lack, a better word was a joke, okay? He was sat behind a screen and did not learn a thing because of a mask. We are talking about a real virus, I understand that, but there is a 9 to 8% survival rate. And not discount anybody who might have lost a loved one, my heart goes out to them, I pray for them. I am just asking you guys to please stay strong and to not have government overreach and to not have even school overreach in that regard, to allow it to be the parents' decision to mask their child or not, because there are children that are being highly affected by being muzzled all day. My son in particular was one of them, and I just, I just needed to tell you guys that because I am proud that you guys are allowing it to be optional. And hearing that there is going to be another discussion, there should be no further discussion. It is the parents' decision, the parents' choice. If masks worked so well, what are they afraid of? Mask your child then, don't put my child into a obstruction. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say that the reason for the meeting is you will always look at new information coming, because that's our job, so it doesn't mean the policy will change, it doesn't mean it won't, but we're always gonna stay on top of it when information comes out. And we don't just ignore any of these people.
I'm Matt Carter through Sasp Ross Lane, the town show. I know, at first, just like to thank you over the last, whatever it's been 18 months now, you've been put in positions, I imagine you didn't really be in with COVID, but you've provided an instructional vibe and educational vibe where my son can flourish this year. And that doesn't happen without your efforts and the efforts of S.A.R.E. and the administration of our mind. So thank you, sincerely thank you for that. On conditional masks, I'm not anti-mask, I'm anti-mandate. There's no reason to mandate these things. If there's a student in my son's classroom, for whatever reason, the parents want the other kids to wear a mask, come to us, we don't need the school board to mandate things to us. Come to us, I'll have the kid put on a mask and make sure he's wearing it properly. Give me a mandate and I don't know why it's happening, I don't care if he wears that mask or not. I don't care if it's hanging down, it'll be cheesecloth for all I care. I don't care. But come to me, come to us, we can work together as a community and figure it out. I don't hate you because you want to wear a mask or you support the mandate. Regardless of your motivation, you can work together on it. I understand that there's this virus out there, we all understand it, but it's practically insignificant to kids. We know that, we know that the outcome is highly stratified, everybody knows that at this point. This isn't March of 2019, we're going now into the third school year. We're messing with kids' education for something that affects us, the adults. Whenever that date came, when Governor Wolf said we could take off our masks, even the most current masks resignable, they all came off that date. They came off, we're gonna tell them our kids we need to keep wearing them, whatever, it's insignificant to them? Yeah? Some kids will, it will affect them. Some kids will die in car crashes, I'm not a school this school year. It might happen. Some kids will get hurt and die in household accidents, yeah, that'll happen too. But we don't need these mandates coming from Harrisburg. And while we're talking about COVID, this thing from the other day with Ginkgo or Concentrix or whatever with this free $87 million testing, I'm sure it's gonna be discussed. Don't do that, that's a waste of educational time. For those that don't know, the state wants to come in and test our kids for COVID on school property during instructional time. The school board has to opt in, and they need to get consent from the parents. What's gonna happen there? First, we're losing instruction time, and what's worse, now we're giving the Department of Health case counts. That's what they want, they want case counts so they can scare people. We already know it's there, we don't need the numbers, we don't need the dashboards, we don't need it. I forgot my other thought. Hey, but sincerely, thanks again, whether you agree with anything I'm saying about the COVID stuff. I know it's contentious, it's very political, I get it, but thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Elizabeth Portol, I'm a pediatrician. I live in Metro, I'm oldest goes to Matthew Elementary. I was actually part of the medical advisory committee last year, and I know how incredibly difficult it was for all the decisions that you had to make. I was so proud to be a member of this school district. I saw the school board be very proactive in keeping the children safe. I was very disheartened with the decision that was made the other week about masks optional. I actually have a petition here signed by several physicians in the area, asking me to reconsider and follow CDC and AAP recommendations. The goal that we all have is for our children to be in school this next year as much as possible. All of the stories that we all hear, the emotional story that all of these parents have, are about how their children were affected because they weren't able to be in school. They weren't able to see their friends, they weren't face to face with their teacher. We know that's where all of this stress, that all of these parents are coming from. We all want the best for our children and for them to get the best education possible. I, as a pediatrician, want them to be safe in school. And we need to be listening to data on how that is, not emotional testimony. The data shows if everyone is masked, kids can stay in school. The latest CDC recommendation is that if the children are three feet apart and both properly masked, if one is positive for COVID, they don't have to quarantine, they exposed person, does not have to quarantine. That could make a huge difference for this next year. We know we're going to see more children be sick with this Delta variant that is just as contagious as chickenpox. That's one of the most contagious illnesses that there is. And I know parents will argue, well, low risk, that my child could get really sick and end up in the hospital. Well, low risk is not no risk, and when it's your child in pediatric ICU, it doesn't matter what the odds are, it's your child that's affected. If you read the news from around the country, pediatric ICUs are filling up and filling up fast. Not only because of COVID, there are other respiratory illnesses that are contributing like RSV, but for pediatrics, we have limited resources. Children are not little adults. I can't send an eight-month-old or a five-year-old to Westmoreland Yard and expect them to get admitted. You can't be admitted as a child to Westmoreland Yard. It's only Children's Hospital, that is the only place that they can go if they need care. What are we gonna do when Children's Hospital ICU beds fill up? What are we supposed to do with our kids? So how do we settle that? The best way to keep our kids in school, which is what all the parents want, is to have them be masked. That is how we keep them in school successfully this next year. That's how we minimize them having to see their pediatric doctor, to be tested, put them in quarantine, so their parents have to stay home while they're completing the quarantine. The other thing that I would also ask for you guys to really give us a better answer on is how are we going to be educating our children when they're at home for their quarantines that they get? Because if the plan is mask optional, and they're all leading in cafeteria, you're going to have hundreds of students that you are quarantining at one time. What is the plan to educate them? If, because my child, who is masked, will still have to quarantine because of other children if he is around that is not masked. So my child will be staying home for 10 days, waiting to see if he develops symptoms. So what is the plan on how we're going to educate him and keep him up to date with his studies? So please, give us a better answer for that than what we received last time, which was, I don't know. And then, who, can I repeat this to you?
Was this the petition you were talking about, this is-
Exactly, because my court petition was in here a few days ago, so I don't think this is the same.
Dr. You can give it to me, or Sarah, you have it.
Hello, my name is Sean Wazeski, I live at 141, Weaken Way, Lake Grove. I just have a question for you, for everybody. For those of you who want to put a filthy mask on my kid, where were you two years? Where were you three years, four years ago, whenever we had flu outbreaks? Why wouldn't you want to put masks on your kids' head? We have had COVID around for 18 months now. There has been as many kids die with COVID, not of COVID, with COVID, as a normal severe flu season for 12 months. So in 18 months, we've had that many deaths with COVID, I want to stress that. Not all of them have died from COVID. But now you want my kid to wear a filthy mask for another year? It's ridiculous. There's no evidence that this Delta variant has any higher hospitalization rates for children than any of the other variants. Yes, it is more contagious, and more kids will get it, but there is no evidence that it's gonna cause more kids to be in the hospital. Everybody in the community, all the parents, all the teachers, they've either had COVID, had the vaccine, or have been given the opportunity to have the vaccine. There's no reason why parents' fears should be in the way of our kids' education and our kids' freedom. I'm in the nuclear industry. Before I go work in a nuclear power plant, I have to take a test called the MPEI. It's a test for whether you're mentally fit to work in the nuclear industry. One of those tests, a lot of those questions are geared around whether you are agoraphobic and a hypochondriac. I think we have, as a society, are reaching the point where we have this mass mental issue where everybody is afraid. We're all afraid that we're gonna die, you know what, we're all gonna die, we all know that. But we shouldn't use our irrational fears and put them on our kids. Make our kids suffer because those parents are afraid, or the grandparents are afraid. Go get your shot, go get your second shot, now you can go get a third shot if you're coming up soon if you really want one. I just don't get it. You know, if you want to mask your kids, go ahead, but don't put that on my kids. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Chad Belichick, 1053, Borland Drive. Currently suing and raising my taxes, thank you for that, I appreciate it. But I'm actually here to talk about this mask fiasco. I wanted to commend all of you. Obviously, it's been a difficult year, and to the gentleman who came out here before, I agree with the thoughts that he said, well, nobody wants your position. And I give you a lot of credit for everything that you're going through. And I know it's not an easy decision, no matter which way you go. So I appreciate all of the time and effort, probably the stress that you have to deal with, no matter what side you're on. I guess the only thing I want to say is, you know, I'm not a medical expert. I have three kids, two of them go to the department of, you know, his breathing condition. Obviously, as a parent, I worry about what would happen if seven-month-old were given a school as just as they go to school, or for me, or for anyone else. But I think what I would ask you to consider is the people that we all rely on, when something goes wrong, and I'm talking about people in the medical profession. So for those of you who, you know, have very strong emotional feelings about masks, respect your opinion, same to rescue over there. I would love to see as a community that we could find a way to not be so divided about this, and really, it's really disheartening frankly, to see how difficult this is. But I would just ask you, in your consideration- But I would just ask you, in, in your consideration of this, uh, consider the medical professionals and the advice that they give, because they're the ones, when we get sick or our kids get sick, I don't know, but you take your child to the doctor when he gets sick. I would ask you to rely on their advice, more so than anyone else's, because when, when it goes bad, seven months are gonna be standing there, uh, helping us. And anything we can do to not, uh, force, uh, the stress on that infrastructure that we have, I think would be the thing. So, uh, that's all I wanna say.
Anyone else? Yes, I would just like to clarify, now, uh, Dr. Cutrell, who, Portol, who came up. Um, if students are quarantined, and I don't know if this was a misunderstanding, but they would be permitted to participate in online instruction if they're quarantined. So I just wanted to, I noticed that-
Who is doing the online instruction?
It's their teacher.
Okay, so that's like assuming, like, the whole class is quarantined.
No.
So it's streaming like last year?
If a student, yes, if a student is quarantined, they will be permitted to be online with their classmates, with their teacher.
Okay.
We are not permitting on and off, on and off. But if we or a parent has identified that their child needs to be quarantined by the medical professor, professional, control them that, we will have that teacher do approval invite for that child to be permitted to participate in instruction.
Okay, thank you for that.
Absolutely. Anyone else? I now move for adoption and resolution number 14. Number two. Second.